I'm only letting you take your career.
Yeah.
My husband has here, my husband has this here. Okay, thank you very much.
Wait, wait.
What was your question? Just to see how. Now we have this there. So he's actually going to get a. I can ask him.
Okay.
Yeah.
I don't have to do anything.
I'd like to call a meeting to order. Please rise and join us in the Pledge of Legions.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, and a God invisible with liberty and justice for all.
All right, good afternoon, everybody. Vicki, any persons wishing to address the board? Thank you. Can I get an approval of the minutes of our meeting on May 14th, please?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. Can I get an approval of the agenda, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, same sign. All right, I didn't see any conflicts of interest. Thank you. Again, approval of the consent agenda, please. So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, on to the reports to the president.
Good afternoon, members of the board. Good afternoon. President Peter's been in the construction of these past. Today for you, we have our third to last installment. This is our story. Tonight, we have two programs. We have mechanical and actually three in civil ministry. I do apologize, one of my instructors had an accident. But today, we have Rod Breitling.
Okay, thank you. I hope he's okay.
He's going for surgery today. He hasn't hurt.
Okay.
President Parker and members of the board, thank you for allowing us to present today. In our engineering technology department, we have five programs. And two of them you have previously heard from. They were the architectural engineering program and the construction management program. So today, the three remaining programs are mechanical engineering technology, civil engineering technology, and land surveying science. So the first one we're going to start with is mechanical engineering technology. And the advisor for that is Mr. Schroeder. He's the one who broke his arm. He's in surgery right now. Some technical difficulties here. So Mr. Schroeder, he has worked in the manufacturing environment for several years, 30 years of industry experience. And he also has been an instructor for about 13 years. And at Southeast Tech in the mechanical program, he's been about approximately eight years. And he has done a lot of very innovative things with the program. So one of the first questions, I think, is who our students are. And this is probably true for almost all of the programs at Southeast Tech. But we have a lot of traditional students from Northwest Iowa, Southwest Minnesota, and then Eastern South Dakota and Western South Dakota. We also have a lot of transfer students. Just a lot of them have four-year degrees and then come to our programs. And we have some non-traditional career-seeking individuals as well. So the mechanical engineering technology students learn things like how the manufacturing environment works, how to draw working drawings or 3D models and assemblies. They have a course called reverse engineering where they'll actually take something apart, measure it, draw it up in their software, and then reassemble it or create parts using their 3D printers. So they learn how to design parts for manufacturing. And they really talk a lot about what things are made of and how they are made. So when they graduate, they'll do things like formal working drawings, maybe some 3D modeling, reverse engineering like we talked about. Or they could do prototyping. So if a manufacturing facility has a part that they think they want to put into production, they can make a 3D model and then see how that's going to work. So on your screen, this is just an example of one of his projects. So for one of his assignments, he has the students take their phone out. And then they have to actually create and print a 3D case for their cellphone. So that's kind of a fun project that they do. And then these are some of the places that they would go to work for mechanical engineering technology. Dectronics is a big one. Malloy Electric, Raven. And you can read through those. He also has done, he also has done, like I said, a lot of innovative things. At the end of the semester, his students create projects that are then sold at Sioux Falls Made, or the former Sioux Falls Made. Now it's called 605. So that's kind of a fun thing that they do. And also, he goes out and does a lot of outreach things to, like Whittier Middle School or the girls, he recently was at a girl scout event. So those are just a couple examples. Okay, so civil engineering technology and land surveying science, we're going to talk about those two together because they're very closely related. And my name, I don't know if I introduce myself, but I'm Beth Cassing. I'm the civil engineering technology instructor. I'm a professional engineer licensed in the state of South Dakota. I have a four-year degree from SDSU. And I've been teaching in the department about eight years.
And I'm Rod Breitling. I'm the advisor for the land surveying science program. I have a master's in career technical education with emphasis in surveying. And I'm also a professional land surveyor, which is important to the program. And I've been teaching for a little more than 30 years.
So we split these sides up. So the left side is going to talk about civil engineering technology. The right side's going to talk about land surveying science. And we're going to kind of time together for you. But within the civil engineering technology field, there are really five disciplines. So there are transportation, geotechnical, which is a lot of soils testing, materials testing, environmental, structural and water resources, which has a lot to do with flooding. And so in our courses, we try to touch on each of those different five disciplines.
Land surveying science, we start off with the fundamentals of surveying with equipment and high-tech surveying equipment. And we integrate then the CAD. Nobody draws by hand anymore. So we integrate CAD in all our semesters. And then we have GPS and Geodyscy. GPS as a surveyor, you can't really be a surveyor without class in Geodyscy, which is the science of measuring on the surface of the earth with the geodes and ellipsoids. You've got boundary law, which is laws enacted by Congress in our federal government since the 17 and 1800s. Then you have our route layout, which route layout is not just for roads as it would appear, but it's also water, sanitary, any type of utility alignments and things like that. And then how do you put that stuff in the ground?
So in both of these classes, in both of these courses, they have four semesters of surveying and surveying equipment. And then they have four semesters of CAD, which is computer-aided design. And we use AutoCAD, Civil 3D, and GIS software. And then in the third semester, they take a week-long field trip. And we're going to show you a video of that at the end. So the differences between these two programs really comes down to three different courses. So 90% of our students end up doing both degrees in two years. And the differences are shown on your screen. So on the civil side, we have construction materials testing, asphalt testing, concrete testing, statics, which really is loads on bridges because some of our students do bridge inspections and then water and wastewater.
And one of the problems with land surveying in surrounding states, the programs are all shut down. Nebraska shut down their only program last year. Iowa shut down a program, their only program, about two or three years ago. And the problem is, is you can't get enough students to come into the program. So what we've kind of done is this unique situation where we can get two degrees, you know, in two years with additional classes. Really, it's an additional nine credits. And so the students come in, they come in for a year. The first year is the same for both programs. And they take the classes and they say, hey, you know, I kind of like this surveying thing, you know? And so we encourage them to continue on. And that's what really makes our program so successful is this unique relationship between civil and land surveying. One of the things that we're very, you know, pleased with is INSEES. INSEES is the National Council of Examiners for Engineers and Surveyors. Every surveyor, engineer, and architect is licensed by passing the tests presented by INSEES. It's the same test, whether you're in South Dakota, Florida, or New York, it doesn't matter. It's all the same test. The only thing that's different is some states, 26 states, as a matter of fact, require a four-year degree in surveying. South Dakota does not require that four-year degree. However, what they do require is 24 credits that are taught by a registered land surveyor. And in 2016, they awarded. And if you read really close at the bottom, what programs that align themselves with INSEES' mission of rigorous curriculum? And we were one of the top 10. And if you look at the names of those schools, some of those are, these are big schools. This is the University of Florida. Everybody's heard of that. Troy State, Nicholas State. And these are all very, very, very big schools. And then right in the middle, you've got this Southeast Tech. Well, we were one of the top 10 programs in the country, which, recognized by INSEES, which again, gives out every test to every professional engineer, land surveyor, and architect in the United States. This is the only surveying program left in South Dakota, the tri-state region plus Kansas, I guess. And it's the only land surveying program left. Minnesota does have a four-year degree. They require a four-year degree. But we're the only, one of the only programs left. Employment, after six months, they're all employed. If you look, you know, we've got most of them that go into South Dakota. But you know, what's unique about this, Iowa and Minnesota, you've got Colorado. I would say we had probably 100 openings from Minnesota and Iowa, you know? And so, again, our problem is, it's not the jobs. Our problem is, we just can't find enough students. And then, you know, occasionally, some, especially those students from Minnesota, continue their education. Some do require a four-year degree in some of those states.
So when we look at these statistics, these are just from our current year. But typically, we do have students go to Iowa and Minnesota. Those are our second two. Colorado was kind of a unique experience this year, but we did have a couple go to Colorado. And when we talk about the statistics, we kind of group these two programs as one. So that's kind of what you're looking at. So when they're done, what do they do? Well, the civil engineering technicians, they could do construction inspection. They could do soils or concrete asphalt testing. They could be a CAD technician and work on plans for any type of civil project. They could survey. Or they could work for a contractor. A lot of times, the contractors like the civil students because they understand the CAD software and the GPS. And they're mounting all of that onto their equipment. And so sometimes they prefer the civil students over maybe like a construction management student.
And pretty much the same goes for land surveying, too. There's a variety of different areas they can go into to work in. But again, it's mostly surveying. And it's an outdoor type of profession. Drawing legal documents up, you know, the plating, the lots and the blocks, you know, and things on that order. Or doing a lot of research, you know, courthouses and county engineers and state offices. Where they go to work, land surveying science, okay, if they continue to become licensed, okay, that's another thing we'll just. Southeast is one of the only programs, actually it was the only program, and I think it still is, the only program in the United States that the students can take the FS, INSEES exam upon graduation of their second year. All the other states, the 26 that require four-year degrees, you've got to have that four-year degree. Or the other states that require less than a four-year degree, you have to have your education, your 24 credits or a two-year degree. That kind of varies from state to state. But they also all require experience. Southeast is the only school where you can actually take that exam upon graduation or their last, in their last semester. To become licensed, the only way you can become licensed in South Dakota is by taking those 24 credits and then passing that FS and national exam. It's your first exam. It's again, the same exam in South Dakota as Minnesota, as New York. Same exam, whether you have a two-year degree or four-year, there is no difference. In South Dakota, however, then after that two-year, you know, that exam, I mean, you have to have seven years working under a registered land surveyor, four of which have to be in responsible charge. And then when you're done with that, then you can take the professional exam, which is an eight-hour exam. And there's no more education required. However, there's a lot of studying to do.
Okay, so what we're trying to get at, if you forget everything else we said, is that it is incredible to be a civil engineering technician because you can work outside or inside for the city, the state, a consulting firm. And when you guys drive by and you go, ugh, road construction. We are going, yes, road construction. But in our third semester, we have a course, one week-long course that we require the students to go on. We take two digital media students with us and we do a video from our course. So this is just so you can hear from the students.
Hi, my name is Rod Breitling. And I'm the land surveying science advisor at Southeast Tech. This year, we brought the class out for a working field trip out to Custer State Park. This year's project was a complete field to finish on the visitor's center on the Wildlife Loop. And we try to provide experiences for the students to work on. The kind of the unique thing this year was the weather. Our first day had rained. Rained all afternoon. Did everybody have rain here? Did everybody get wet socks? But we worked through it.
I like Southeast Tech because we do a lot of hands-on work. And it's basically the same work that you would be doing in the field. It's a really good experience and you get to work with the equipment.
Not only working with the equipment, but it's a chance for the students to work on things that they're not comfortable with. Maybe setting up a project. And maybe not understanding the projection. Or working on some offset techniques. Whatever the case may be, it's a great experience for the students to be out here for two, three, sometimes four days, sunup to sundown.
Hi, my name is Jamie Severn. I'm the development manager for Custer State Park. We're here today at the Wildlife Visitor Center doing a survey on this area. The park has identified this area as a possible area for renovation. This area services the visitors that come down on the Wildlife Loop Road and explains the animals that we have in the park. We've identified this area for upgrades, including parking, a hiking trail, and flush toilets. Today, we're doing a survey of this area with Southeast Tech. And we look forward to working with them. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Cody Wicca. I chose this program because I like working outdoors. And the first thing we had to do was set up control at this location. And after that, we wanted to get a good vertical control. So what we did is we went using a total station, using base survey basics, using a phase one and phase two. And then, actually, there was two of us doing this. And we both ended up exactly on.
Hi, my name's Connor Blossman. And I chose the Civil Engineering Technology and Land Surveying Science Program at STI because I've always been on the other side of the construction world. And I've always admired the civil engineers and the land surveyors and what they've done for the construction industry. Finally, one day, I decided I was going to go back to school for this program. Now, for this project that we're out here in Custer State Park, our closest NGS point was two and a half miles back to the north at an airport. But in order to pull control from that point over to our project, we had to set up what is known as this repeater radio station. And that will allow us to receive and transmit the control that we need over to our project, which is four miles back to the south the other way.
I learned the importance of shooting tops and toes to make sure our contours come in right.
Hi, my name's Jason. I'm a student here at Southeast Tech. Doing some CAD work for this project that we're working on for Custer State Park. I'm collecting the data that the other students are doing out in the field. They're bringing their point files from their data collectors. And I'm putting it into CAD to have that do our line work.
My name's Joseph Weber. I chose this program from the love of the outdoors. Today, we're doing a continuous tow pull using five-second, 20-foot intervals. As you can see, the terrain around me is almost impossible to pass with a normal vehicle or an ATV. So what we're doing today is walking with a backpack and walking the terrain. This is a method used in the industry where using a vehicle or an ATV could ruin crops.
This year, we're updating a project that was done, that was started last year by last year's group. They added camping pads over last year, which include gravel pads for each camper and underground water, underground sanitary sewer, and electric at each pad. We did this by using a robotic total station to tap into last year's control.
Hi, my name is Matt Fisher. Today, we shot some buildings. And the first corner we shot, we used a four-point intersection. And then for the inaccessible corners, we used the offset technique of turn angle and distance. And then that computed this right here.
Hi, my name's Andrew Sammons. Really thankful for this opportunity to come out to Custer this year because it helped me get a lot more comfortable with the total stations and starting and finishing jobs from sunup to sundown.
Hi, my name is Tukastin. My background is in applied physics. I want to share my career. That's why I choose this program.
I just wanted to give a big thanks to the South Dakota Society of Professional Land Surveyors. Without them, this trip would not be possible. We are out here in Custer working from sunup to sundown. And I gained lots of experience with equipment that I wasn't as comfortable with.
This year, we brought 13 civil engineering technology students and land surveying science. And also, two digital media production students, along with two instructors to Custer State Park.
Hi, my name is Annie.
And my name is Dalton.
And we'd like to thank Southeast Tech.
And the Digital Media Production Program.
For allowing us to go on this trip.
Thank you, Custer State Park.
And South Dakota Game Fish and Parks for this great experience.
We got home late last night. Today, we got our point files from Jason. Now we are working our individual drawings.
I want to say thank you to the South Dakota Society of Professional Land Surveyors. And.
Any questions?
I want to know, what do you do on a test that takes eight hours?
Yeah, it's a very intense, very intense test.
When the students get done, they can't hardly even take, they can't even look at their watch. They can't look at their phone. They're totally exhausted.
It's like in a one-setting kind of a.
Yeah. So like for a professional engineering exam, it's the same thing. You have an eight-hour exam after your first four years as a bachelor, BS degree. And then you work for four years under a professional engineer. And then you take another eight-hour exam. So land surveying is very similar to that. But yes, it is very, it's excruciating.
And every year, there's a different exam. If you didn't pass.
Sure.
You know, you try to study what you, you know, you need work on. But you don't know what's on the next, you know, the next exam could be very different.
Right.
So you, there's a lot of study, a lot of prep work.
And what is the benefit to taking the exam? Is it a compensation for your job? Is it, what's the?
To become licensed.
Okay.
If you're, once you're licensed, you can, you can sign your own plans. You can set your own boundaries, start your own business.
Okay.
Otherwise, you always have to work under a registered land surveyor.
Okay.
So if you look at any construction plans, even a building, they have to be stamped by either a registered architect or a structural engineer, civil engineer, or a land surveyor. It's usually the boundary part of it.
Okay, interesting.
And you had a great list of the people that these graduates work for. Do you know, like, what's the starting wage for somebody in a South Dakota position, for example?
Usually, it's about $19.50. So it ranges from $16.50 to, I think, 24 was our highest this year. But on average, it's about $19, $19 or $19.50 dollars an hour.
A really great, I mean, great career for a two-year investment in their time and energy and effort to really learn it. And then, as you showed, I mean, there were a variety of students and jobs available and inside and outside. And, you know, if you get bored, you can go do something else. So that's awesome. And I think any time that you can associate like a field trip or a true hands-on experience, it's such a culmination of their actual learning. You know, you can sit in a classroom and you can visualize what that might look like. But to actually go out to Custer, for example, I'm sure that was a fabulous experience. You know, just socially and having fun, but also the learning that took place during that specific one. You could tell they were very engaged, so great job.
I'm hoping you do end up with bathrooms at the Custer Loop because we stop there every year.
What's the maximum of students you can probably have in your program at a time?
Well, 30 is what we would typically. So a typical year, we would start with 30 and graduate 24. This last year, we had kind of a lower number. We graduated 12, but we have 24 in our first year.
Perfect. And pass rate on the exam?
Well, you didn't address that.
Well, and is there a national average?
I mean, I bet there's maybe, a lot of people don't pass in general.
Right. The first time.
The national average of.
Okay, the national average varies from quarter to quarter. It's been as low as 26% and as high as 46%. But, you know, that's across the board. I mean, that's with students with no education. I don't know if there's any states like that. But to students with a four-year degree, well, if you have a four-year degree, your passing rate's a lot better. Well, if you have a four-year degree, your passing rate's a lot better. Okay, we strive for a seventy percent. You know, that's what we're hoping for. And if we can get that, I'm happy with that. You know, if they don't, well, we found out, they study all summer or a year, take it the next year, and they typically pass. The other thing that's interesting that we didn't have in our slides here, this, in our first year, or our second-year group, cohort of students, there's four of them with four-year degrees. And then, last year's graduates also have four-year degrees. So, you know, we have a lot of transfer students, as much as, you know, with baccalaureate degrees.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Any other questions or comments? Can I get a motion, a second, to approve the academic program overview report? So moved.
Okay.
Any discussion?
Thanks again for your time. It's very interesting.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. Okay. Thank you very much.
President Parker, members of the Board, Lon Hurd, Director of Industry Relations, and thank you for the opportunity today to report on the collaboration efforts between Southeast Tech and CTE Academy. And Josh Hall sends his regrets. It was our intention to co-present, excuse me, present this afternoon, and Josh had a conflict in schedule, so he wasn't able to be here. We've had a really great year in terms of that collaboration and the production that comes out of that. Several of the things that we have worked on have been apprenticeship efforts, and of course, I spent a lot of time on apprenticeships in the last year or so. And just to bring a couple of those forward, the first one is a program that started this week, as a matter of fact. On Monday, we started with twelve students in our construction pre-apprenticeship. And I'm happy to tell you that a full half of those students were from Sioux Falls schools. And we'll also tell you that out of those, for those twelve, we only had ten spots with contractors. So we actually overproduced what the contractors asked us to do. And so, that program is up and running. The students spent the last two days in an OSHA ten-hour class. I hope they come back tomorrow. That's the most boring class on the planet, so it's, I hope we get them all back. But that's up and running very well. I'm really excited to see how that program develops through the summer. I'm excited to see what those students will have to tell us as they go through. We stressed on that first day that we really want their feedback. What I'm hoping is that they all go back to school and say that this is the best summer ever, and that we'll have more, both students available and contractor jobs available next summer. So it's going to be very exciting to see that. The second apprenticeship is our Carpentry Apprenticeship that was done in partnership with the Home Builders Association as well. And Josh was very gracious in affording us room in their construction lab and use of tools and things like that. And so, we've made great use of that in getting students down there. We give them lots of time in classroom time, and that's very important in order to reinforce and actually get them down there and get hands-on things and let them either build things or tear them apart, either one. And so, it's, we're very much appreciative as to the availability of the CTE labs and equipment for that program. The third apprenticeship is much more encompassing than that, and Dr. Peters is going to present on the South Dakota Pass Project here shortly. And so, I'm not going to go into detail on that, but just suffice to know that we have worked really hard with CTE in aligning those information technology programs. And A, there's dual-credit opportunities there, and then this folds into the South Dakota Pass Project, which has potential to really allow students a lot of very interesting opportunities, starting in high school and going all the way to graduate degrees. And so, again, we're very excited to see how that progresses and how it develops over the next couple of years. The dual-credit opportunities have grown tremendously. In the medical field, we have medical terminology as well as CNA dual-credit opportunities. Going back to the information technology, there are, the alignment of that programming has been a great collaboration between the two organizations and afford students a running start into a networking degree at Southeast Tech and also a number of other paths that they can start on while they're in high school. We have the Academy of Finance dual-credit that can afford up to seventeen credits, which I think is incredible that a high school student can leave high school with that kind of college credit load. I think that's a tremendous opportunity. Moving on, in April this year, we co-hosted the Skills USA Competition. And frankly, this turned out better than we ever could have asked. Now, it would have been a lot better had we not had a blizzard involved in that. But I tell everybody that if I could have changed that, I'd make a lot more money than I do. So it's, but it really worked well. We had two hundred and forty-some-odd students competing here from all four tech schools and, I believe, nine high schools across the state. The CTE students conducted themselves wonderfully. They were a joy to have on campus. All of the students, we really just had a great competition. It turned out well. I think everyone was pleased with the way the competition went. This is our first year of three hosting it. We look forward to that. I've reported here in the past on that, and that certainly was a great collaboration. And we literally could not have done that without the gracious hosting and co-hosting with CTE because their facilities were tremendously important, their help was tremendously important. So that was very much appreciated. Other projects involve Construction Awareness Day, which is held at CTE. Some of the engineering students go down there to help run various stations, to help the high schoolers involved in that. Certainly, a great collaboration. Have to mention the Associated General Contractors involvement of that. They're a great partner there as well. And finally, the Citibank Grant, which afforded us the opportunity to put career coaches into the high schools in Sioux Falls and certainly be an extension of the voice of technical education. And Southeast Tech will benefit from that for at least the next couple of years, and we're already seeing benefits there. As we went into the construction pre-apprenticeship, we reached out to them to help us recruit students to put in those positions, and frankly, they're to thank for filling that program. We were doing pretty well on our own, but a couple of phone calls from them and them going out and talking to students really kind of sealed that deal. So that Citibank Grant and those positions are already proving their worth. So that's certainly a great collaboration, and we're appreciative of the district there. So any questions on that collaboration?
No, I don't think so.
If not, thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you. All right. All right, no questions. Can I get a motion to acknowledge the report on the Southeast Tech-CTE partnerships, please?
So moved. Second?
Any discussion? And then, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign.
President Parker? Members, I'm back. Today, I'm going to talk to you a little bit about South Dakota Pass. And if you remember, this is an initiative the Governor came and spoke at, at Southeast Tech. It's been going on for about half a year, and there's been some major improvements to it. So we just kind of want to give you a status update, so it's not so much about the initiative itself, but kind of where people are at. As you remember, it is about information technology. So our partners are, of course, Dakota State, ourselves, Southeast Tech. We're working with the Sioux Falls School District, but primarily, it's been with CTE. But the district itself will become more involved as we get into the programming aspect. Right now, we're more on the hardware side, so we've been working more with CTE. Department of Labor Regulation is also partners, so that's very helpful, and they're going to be able to help provide some pathways for individuals. And as I end this, we'll talk about how we're going to get some of the South Dakota employers involved as well. When we set it up, we had three main areas, and software development is the first. The network services, which is very broad. Basically, that's going to be your hardware side. And then, Dakota State with cybersecurity. We have a little bit of that, but that's primary going to be from Dakota State. But again, it's an excellent pathway for individuals in the state. One of the key things is the on-ramps that we have. And so, what you see here is we have five different areas that we're focusing on. The key is that each area is kind of focused on a different population. So when you think about internships, you know, obviously, these are students, but this is a person who's going to be able to get that experience and maybe find out if networking or programming is for them. The other aspect, when they're in school, you know, we can do a lot in the classroom, but really, for those who've had internships or practical experiences, you really know the learning really enhances the presentation they did earlier. You can't beat that real-life experience that you get. Certificates are kind of the new buzzword of the last five years, and really, those are going to be more focused. The diplomas can be considered certificates as well. What we're looking at there is people that are in school, exploratory, but also people who might be like myself, an electronics person, but learn networking. So if you have one degree, you might be able to learn another skill to enhance it. So a big area. Obviously, the associate and baccalaureate are what we do. And then, as Lon mentioned, we have the apprenticeships coming up. So that's going to be kind of our overall encompassing because that'll set our skillset for all the initiatives. A status update, Dakota State, they pretty much have most of their things in place. They have the baccalaureate degrees. These are existing before. Nothing new is made there. They have had Network and Security Administration and Software Development Associate degrees. Those are AS degrees, so those are designed to fit right into their four-year degree. And then, their three certificates they just created, cybersecurity, network services, and software development, they've been working with the district and CTE to provide pathways for that. These are pretty high-level certificates, so they'd be good for people moving towards that four-year degree, but also who really want some of those higher-end skills. At Southeast, we have our four primary degrees. The first three are the networking, network administrator, system administrator, and then information technology, security. And then, the last one, programming, is obviously computer information service, so it's a business programming. That does have an internship as part of it. We will look at whether we are going to put an internship into the top three degrees. We also have a one-year diploma that goes into the networking degrees, as well as one that goes into the programming. So computer technician is the first common core of the top three degrees, and then the software support is the first year of the programming degree. Those have been in place forever. And basically, what we've been doing is providing a pathway for individuals who want to get involved in the technical field but don't want to work at the highest level. Last month, we went to the Board of Technical Education and brought forward four new certificate programs. So these are all embedded within our existing curriculum, so they all provide pathways to the four, or to the two-year degree. The network and computer support are tied to the networking areas, and then the last two, Java and web programming, are of course tied to programming. So the computer support is the one we're probably focusing on the most. That's your basic skills, so we're really trying to help push that through the school system. That's the one who's going to get your foot into the door. The network support, Java, web, those are ones for people who maybe have some experience and want to work the outset. Okay. Career and Tech Ed, they've been doing a fantastic job with internships. They're getting people out there, helping them find out if technology is for them. As Lon mentioned, we have concurrent credit for our hardware class. So concurrent credit means it's taught by your instructor, and we receive the credit. Then, we're really working on those pathways to certificates, so they've been working with DSU, they've been working with us. Their big thing is they're waiting for us to get our articulation with Dakota State done. So we've been sending syllabi back and forth to get that accomplished. We're hoping for some advances this summer. So what do we have left ahead? As Lon mentioned, the apprenticeship is still in process, the articulation agreement. And then, the curriculum. Right now, CT is on a three-year rotation. If we can get these certificates articulated, they might do a pilot to try to get this moved forward where they could have their students take courses there. We would offer one through dual-credit, and they would get the certificate while in high school. And then, hopefully, move that to Dakota State. We're working on the Industry Support Board, so we're talking to all of our advisory boards to try to get some sponsors for this program. And then, of course, marketing and recruitment to get students involved and also underemployed. So that is a very quick status update. Yes.
You know, do we currently offer, I know Lincoln doesn't offer AP programming anymore at the high school. Do any of the other high schools offer that?
Their goal for that is to actually start offering it in at a lower level. What they're going to do is they're going to bring in programming to the middle school and then hopefully offer AP programming at the freshman level. So that is one of the major strides for this. And then, the programming would count for our programming and for Dakota State's. So that'll all articulate in.
Do I remember something, too, when we initially talked about Code to the Future? That was kind of part of this...
That's exactly it.
Long-term plan was to look at all these elementary, current elementary students who are going to have some really great skills by the time they get into middle school, and then as we continue that into middle school. What does that look like for those high school students?
Yeah, so if you get them at the middle school, and then they can get into programming, then the idea, South Dakota Pass, will continue working on pathways while they're sophomores, juniors, and seniors. So that way, if we can push our curriculum down into the secondary level, they can go out into the workforce sooner, or they can go into our degrees sooner.
Sure. Awesome.
Any other question?
Such a great opportunity, and I think if you look at how business is changing in general, careers, you know, we always say we want our kids to be college or career-ready, and I think this makes them both, you know...
And this is a huge area. Everything, when you look at the Internet of Things, everything needs technology. So whether you're just hooking up your phone or whether you're hooking up your refrigerator, for goodness sakes.
Yeah, very cool. Thanks for the update.
Thank you.
All right. Can I get a motion to accept the SB Pass report, please?
So moved.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. All right, moving on, Rich.
President Parker, members of the Board, Rich Kloon, Vice President, Finance and Operations, just a couple quick reports in interest of time. This is usually where I empty the room out, so I appreciate the fact that you guys are sticking around to hear this. First one...
We're going over time, we'll see you later.
Well, you'll have to get that through the budget, but just a couple of quick ones. The first one relates back to an emergency declaration that this board granted to us last fall related to a fire event at the health building. So we had the fire, we had the flood associated with it, we avoided the famine. But as it turned out, we threw all the process now, the largest expense that we incurred was really related to the cleanup and the restoration of the facility. So you see the PO that was issued to INTEC there in the amount of fifty-three thousand, rough, little over fifty-three thousand dollars. So that restored the facility back to its pre-event condition. A few other expenses that were incurred as part of the process. The Southeast Tech bookstore, we actually had students occupying one of the rooms that was impacted when the sprinkler heads went off. Their books were damaged. Obviously, they vacated the building and left their materials, so we made sure they were back up with their course materials as they were finishing their semester, and the insurance company reimbursed us the cost of the books. Obviously, we didn't get the margin on them, but that was our cost of those books to make sure those students were back up and running. The biggest exposure we had in the event was the affected area was right over one of our simulation labs. It had a lot of the simulation equipment in there. I hate to even guess on what was in there, maybe a million dollars' worth of equipment. So one of the pieces was, was to bring CAE Healthcare, which was the provider of the equipment, out to do an assessment of what potential damage there was with the water. You know, clearly, we could have hit the switch and might have been fun to watch, but probably not the right way to do it. So those folks came out, and there was an eighty-one-hundred-dollar fee to bring out a technician to evaluate all the equipment. So the next line down is the upshot to that evaluation. That's what it costs to bring that equipment and those simulators back online. Basically, it was a replacement of the power supplies. So fared very well in that sense of what it took and no damage to those simulation devices. There were a couple motorized hospital beds that were damaged in it, and then the last thirty-eight-hundred dollars is the replacement of those beds. Couple other expenses related to this, there was a structural engineer that visited the site and told us what needed to be done for the roof truss. They were paid directly by the insurance company, so that did not run through us. And then, the little bit of minimal repairs that needed to be done by that roof structure were handled by the contractor that was doing the roofing project, and we didn't incur any costs in that either. So this is a full accounting of the expenses related to that event, and also the fact that we were 100% reimbursed by our insurance provider, their insurance providers.
Mm-hmm. Thanks, Rich.
Questions or...
Questions or?
Can I get a motion to acknowledge the report on the emergency declaration?
Come on. Second.
Any discussion?
Could have been a lot worse.
Yes, yeah, could have been worse. Appreciate the update.
Yeah, it could have been, could have been much worse, and everybody did a good job of getting this back up and running and trying to minimize the impact of the students that were enrolled in the courses, and then as we started into the fall too.
Yep.
So all worked well.
Yes.
So that's the good thing.
So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign? Okay, you're up again.
The second report is a little bit out of sequence. Normally, I do quarterly financial and oral reports. You receive these financials every month, and I tend to report out the quarterly. It seems kind of odd to come before your last report was budget, and I know how everybody's excited to hear that and really don't want to hear a quarterly fiscal report. So since we're so far past March 31st, I just brought it up to date through the end of April, and just wanted to point out a few things that typically you see every month. But as we look at the post-secondary fund, where I'll spend the majority of the time, as you go in and look at these, and it's probably a good way to start looking at how we think we're going to end up through the year. So as you, as you look at the revenue categories, think about we're 10-twelfths of the way through our fiscal year, which is 83%. Year-to-date, we've earned 84.86% of what our anticipated budgeted revenue was going to be. It's always a caveat to the revenue side, just because of our reporting and what we do out at Southeast and how we get it over to the district's general ledger, there's always a month delay. So the revenue is actually revenue through March 31st. So as we look out, as we head into the end of the year, looking at the tuition and fees, I just ran and looked at what we billed for May and the summer enrollment. I'm estimating at this point, we should exceed that budget by about $700,000. That's consistent with what we've been talking about all along this year with our 6% enrollment growth. That's starting to materialize in our, in our financial statements as well, and that's what we'll see as we, as we move forward. Other local revenue, that's kind of the hodgepodge of everything that doesn't fit someplace else. We get through the end of the year, I think we'll actually exceed that by a pretty substantial amount as a percentage raw dollars, not that much, maybe $100,000 over what we had originally budgeted. So that's on track and actually a little bit better than on track. When we look at our state revenues, there's a couple things that aren't reflected in this. One is the fourth quarter payment, which has obviously come in, but not reflected on there. There's some additional Board of Regents janet agreement money that's coming in. Our state revenue, probably going to be just a little bit below what the budget amount was, but not a material amount to, to have a negative impact. Federal revenue, we should be pretty close to being right on, maybe a little bit less in that area as well. Not a whole lot of different differential there. And then the other is just a category that we didn't necessarily budget for. When you get down into the expenditure side of it, salaries were on track when you look at that, and the expenditures are through April, so that does fit with the 10-twelfths of the year, 83% of it. So regular salaries were on track. Hourly pay up just a little bit, but again, it's such a small category, it doesn't have a huge impact to it. The early retirement expenses will actually come at the end of the year when we actually post that to the GL. I think the budget amount's a little bit less than what we're actually going to incur this year, but again, not a huge dollar category, not a huge dollar amount. The retirement insurance benefits flow with the wages, that's right on track. Professional services, you can see, were already over what we expended for this year, but there's a couple things that we've talked about in the past and just kind of to draw them back to your attention. The capital campaign proposal is coming out of those categories. Some of the work we did with Staymates has come out of that category as well. Some of the things that Russ Krieger did have come out of that category as well. So at the end of the year, when we look at this, we're going to be over expended in the purchase services category, but those were planned and have been communicated as we've moved through the year. As I go down, most of these other ones are fairly on track. The printing solution, quite a bit less there. That's a methodology change. Years passed, and the way that we were structured in our arrangement with Xerox, which changed under the new Marco plan, we just charged everything off to printing. We allocated off the cost of the equipment rental to printing, everything else directly to printing. So the budget was built that way. Under the new contract, it's a little more easier to delineate what's actually equipment rental costs, that's going in a different category. So there'll be a little bit of variance here, but overall, our total expenditures are in printing are actually a little bit less than what we had planned to expand, so we'll pick up some dollars that way. Utilities, I would have said we're on track, but given how hot May was, we may not be. So we'll wait and see what happens with that. Repair and maintenance, we're pretty close to that, but you've got to realize a lot of the R&amp;M are service contracts that have already been paid and in place. It's not actual repairs up to this date. That's also a category that's very hard to project, so you, you kind of do your best guess on that. Supplies and materials are up a little bit, kind of two major areas. Classroom supplies, which you would expect with increased enrollments, and then some software things, and that again relates to the Marco and how we're handling the Marco and the One Card systems. So these are all things that we've, we've talked about in the past. When you get down dues and fees, you'll see that pick up. We've made the last payment to the Board of Regents, that's the other side of the revenue coin, where we're actually making the expenditures for the Board of Regents, so that should come in right online. The miscellaneous, you're going to see that jump up. You approve the transfers and the consent agenda. That goes back to last year's fiscal audit as part of it. It was talked about in this budget too, as an operating subsidy to the Food Service Fund. So you'll see that transfer, and that'll come out of that miscellaneous category. So once we actually hit that in the general ledger and post that, move that money, we'll see that category bump up a little bit. Uncollectible tuition fees, that's our bad debt. There's always a lump sum, there's a big timing to that, because when we do our summer charges, we let them age 120 days before we actually write them off as being uncollectible. It's when we send them under a collection agency. So you'll see that jump up too. We just did an entry this last month, so that'll come up a little bit. I still think we'll be under what we estimated, and if you're really paying really, really minute detail to the budget, you'll see actually lower that in the budget for next year. So we, we should be in line with where we need to go on that. Building improvements, we're right on track. Land improvements, we always are a little bit less than what we do, what we plan there. Equipment, we're up, but this, that's related to the GoEd funding that we received. There was a supplement done, I think, back last fall, just hasn't ever been reflected in the, in the GL yet. So the expenditures are there, but the budget adjustment's still coming, so you'll see that in the revenue and the expense side of it. And technology expenditures, we're right on track of where we need to be. In this report, you're seeing revenues over expenses by about $300,000. That's really tracking well. When I did the projections for the FY19 budget, I anticipated we were going to actually have expenditures over because of the capital campaign and some of the other things, but we're really tracking now. I'm going to make a bold prediction early, which will probably be wrong, but I think we'll come in pretty close. Be revenue expenditure neutral in FY18. There'll be some entries that we need to make as far as the year closeout that may affect some of this one way or the other. But the summer enrollments for the May billings look strong, looks good. As I indicated, we're going to be about $700,000 up on that, so that'll cover some of those actions that we've taken this year and some of the adjustments that we had planned to step outside of and actually maybe dip into fund balance. Hopefully, we won't have to do that.
Can we ask questions on this one before we move to the next one?
Sure, you bet. I'm not going to have much on the other ones.
Yeah. The federal, is it just a timing issue why we're so-
Yeah, the thing in on the federal one is it's predominantly Perkins funding, and we always wait until the end of the year to draw that down. We wait until we've expended all the equipment dollars that we've done, so that's been done. We still got some questions on some of the labor allocation, so we're going to clarify that, but it's a timely thing. Typically, we just wait until the end of the year.
And then the reimbursement from the insurance, is that been realized in this 430? And does that go into other local, where do you?
No, that's probably in, yeah, it's probably in the other local, excuse me. Yeah, it goes in, and it's actually a general ledger that actually says insurance proceeds. So we've deposited funds into that. We've also had some other insurance proceeds related to another fire event, which we, I believe we talked about, we didn't have to declare an emergency declaration, but that was related to the hub and that air compressor that lit up. So, but we've got some insurance proceeds on that, and we're moving forward with that repair as well.
Thank you.
As we look at the other categories, the bookstore fund is right on track with where we anticipate it. We may wind up having to come in with a supplement because we can't over, we can't exceed our appropriation. So the appropriation for the year was 2.5 million. You can see we've already expended 2.4, but this is all a factor of sales volume. So if you have more students, you can sell more books, you're going to have an offsetting revenue to it as well. So we'll kind of track that and see what's happening through May, and it may be where we come back with a supplement as we come to true things up at year-end. One of the things kind of relating back to the consent agenda item, if you go back to the first page on the report and you look at the, at the cash, I just wanted to mention that we are transferring some money from the bookstore. It's really tied to the equipment purchases of the food service. That was always the intent of it, was for the bookstore to loan the money, given that post-secondary fund is subsidizing it. I'm not sure that that's, we might be a bad debt client in the food service to the bookstore, but we'll evaluate that and see how it goes as we, as we go forward. But if you look at that first page that has the cash balances, you see that the bookstore only has, shows in this report, $600,000 in cash. I just want to mention, we're not going to leave the bookstore cash short in this transfer. What isn't always reflected in these reports, because we're just looking at revenue and expenditures, is the balance sheet side of it. So as you go out and you look at the bookstore's financial statements and look at their balance sheet, they're holding a fairly large AR that is good money. It's actually bookstore charges to students. We have the funds for it, we just haven't transferred it, it's in an entrust and agency account. So it just hasn't moved over. If you looked at that report, you saw there was 1.6 million in that tuition and fees account. That's funds that need to be slid over into the bookstore. So between this report and the last one, we already paid about a quarter of a million dollars and just signed a check today for another quarter million dollars of cash going in. So we're not hurting the bookstore any in their cash position, so just wanted to make sure we were clear understanding of that. The food service fund, as we, we flip into that next page and look at that, I think we've talked about what we're trying to address coming out of the audit with the subsidy of it, the dollar amount that's coming forward. We'll take care of the negative cash balance. We're starting to make the changes operationally that we think we need to do, and that's what the FY19 budget's reflecting. With the subsidy amount, it's a little bit less than what we needed this year and what we would have needed last year in that first year of operations. So it's, I don't know if it's ever going to be self-supporting. As we, we did a survey instrument, we haven't done the full report out of it, haven't dug real deep into the details, but a couple things that I saw in looking at it that were a little bit, I don't want to say alarming to me, but not what I had hoped for. One of the questions we asked was how frequent were you visiting and how frequent were you making purchases? 63%, none at all, or less than one time a week? We've got to have greater utilization of that in order to close that. So there's an opportunity there, not necessarily a negative thing, so it's an opportunity that we need to look at. The second thing, which you have certainly brought before, it looks at to the amount of money that the students are spending. Most are less than 20 bucks a week. That doesn't work either for us, so we've got to figure a way. And I think it relates to the cost of education and everything else that's going on with it. So we just, we'll have to continue to work on it, we'll have to look and see what we, what we can do to, one, try to draw them into it with more visits, and then try to, I think with the more visits, we'll start to see more dollars being spent, so we've got some plans.
That's, the plan, in, in that survey, did you ask things like why you don't use it? Is it cost? Is it location? Is it hours?
We didn't, we didn't, we didn't go to, we didn't go to the negative. We asked about the hours and when do they typically frequent it. So the hours seem to fit, it seems to fit with our course schedule. So when you look at the utilization, it's heavy into the morning and over the noon hour, and it drops way off as we get into the, to the later aspects of it. So there's not utilization. So our question on the hours when you use it extended beyond when students are there, but when we're open. So we would know, is what I'm getting at. We would know when, if they were utilizing those late afternoon hours and they're not. So I think that kind of fits with our course scheduling is one piece of it. We didn't ask why they're not spending money, just how much they were spending, how frequent they were using. Kind of asked some very open-ended questions, you know, what's your favorite thing, what do you like best about it? All fairly positive and related to that. So I, I think the product mix is there. Didn't get a lot of complaints of it's too high-priced, which you're going to hear anyway.
Right.
But didn't have a lot of that. We tried to offer daily specials and handling those kinds of things. So one of the questions we asked about was, is there enough time between the courses? And it wasn't, it wasn't bad, it wasn't great, it was kind of a blend. Actually, it was a little better than what I thought it may have been in the sense that there was probably 30% that didn't feel they had enough time between their courses, but 70 either strongly felt, either agreed that they did, or neither, didn't have an opinion on it. So that was a concern that maybe we weren't allowing enough of it. Part of it, I think, is location in terms of it's not centrally located, it's down on one end of it. So that's part of our tie-in with the bookstore to see if we can try to get product into the Nicholson a little bit better and try to increase some of those sales. You know, I harken to my own experience and go, this is closer than what I had to walk, but it's a different walk, and so we have to be cognizant of that.
It's all à la carte, no meal plan at all?
No, there's, there's no meal plan. We're not doing any mandated or forced. That was another piece of it, kind of in the question of where are you currently living that I think comes into the mix of a, in a rather large percentage are living with a parent or at home, which-
Cheaper for-
Well, it's cheaper, but you also hate to then have an automatic or a mandated charge when that percentage of our students are living at home. So the subsidy's there, that's going to help us in FY19, but all we'll do is we'll start to blow that survey apart and start looking at that utilization by what building, and most of them have their classes in. And we should be able to start delineating and see that is the use greater for those buildings that are closer than they are for the, say, the Nicholson building that's much farther away, and I suspect that's what we're going to see.
And I wasn't even thinking more like mandated meal plan, but I was thinking like if you buy three meals a week or go there three times, you get a better price or, you know, something-
Yeah, one of the things we're going to implement, I think what we're going to try to do is we have a One Card, campus card, where you can load dollars onto it. So we're really going to try to push and promote that and do some upfront discounting on it, kind of to your point, you know?
The prepaid.
Spend $100 and get $120 for meals. The other caveat that we add to that is there really isn't a risk to it, because we'll refund the money. We're not going to refund the $20 for free, but, but we would, they're not at risk, so if they don't use it, they can make a request and we'll refund the funds to it. So those are some of the things that are in the works. You know, product line or product offering was of great concern to me, but the open-ended questions on the feedback didn't really seem to be an issue. But we'll, like I said, go in and blow it all apart and really dig into it and see what we can, see what we can find.
What, because I would see subsidizing, I'm not, I don't have a problem with that, I guess, what would be an acceptable number, you think, going forward? Not on this year, that you-
Well, ideally, we shouldn't have to subsidize. That's the whole purpose of the enterprise fund, is to operate like a business. Really, in some respects, they already are getting subsidized in terms of, you know, they're not paying utility, they're not paying any utility costs, they're not paying any of the custodian costs, they're not- of the custodian costs, they're not paying any of the accounting and the human resources costs. They already have that subsidy that really isn't reflected on what happens in the balance sheet. So my objective or my goal would be that it should eventually work its way to zero. And now, is that in a year? Is it in three years? Is it in, hopefully, it's very quick and we start to see it trending in the right direction.
Thank you.
Sure. Last one, just very quickly, childcare fund. Again, knowing that that revenue is offset by a month, the April revenue was $32,000, so that brings that revenue expense fairly close to where we need to be. And I've talked at great length about the childcare fund being a little bit of a dig notch. Sometimes it's up, sometimes it's down, so we'll just kind of track that as we head into the, into the end of the year. Very high level. Any detailed questions or specific questions?
Thanks. Any questions for Rich?
Thank you.
All right. Can I get a motion and a second to approve the quarterly finance report?
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? Thanks, Rich.
Thank you.
All right. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. Right, the motion passes. All right, can I get a motion to adjourn, please? Or anything else for the good of the order, sorry. Making sure, no? Okay, can I get a motion to adjourn?
Oh.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.